All right, I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order on July 13th. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I know that there was a late addition, but if you've refreshed your eScribe, it should be there under Planning 6.4, should be there. That'll be confirmation of financial contribution for the agreement municipal fund application. So that should be there for you. And if it's not there, then just please refresh your eScribe. Anyone have anything else to add or delete? Hearing none, we will declare the agenda approved. Are there any announcements from members of council? Not hearing, there's not a ton of stuff going on. I would like to acknowledge the passing of Alex Peeler. I know that happened last week. Alex was a staff member here since 2019. He was our events coordinator and beyond that, he made a huge contribution just in the community, either through his film work or through being on the Accessibility Committee for the province. And so our hearts go out to the Peeler family at their loss. Alex will be missed, but certainly not forgotten. And there is a service on Saturday for Alex. Any other announcements? Then before we move into the minutes, I'll just remind the public that we're meeting virtually because it is still illegal for us to meet in person under the Minister of Municipal Affairs order. The request has been made multiple times for the last five weeks now to have that amended. And we received confirmation today that it has not been amended. So until that has changed, we are not allowed to meet in person. And I know I'm getting a lot of emails or calls from people wondering, you know, can I meet with council? Can I speak before council in person? Because some people aren't comfortable doing it on Teams. And the answer is unfortunately, no, we wish we could. We're fighting pretty hard to meet in person, but right now, we're not allowed to do that. So if there's nothing else, we'll move down to minutes. Do you have the minutes of June 22nd council meeting? Any errors or omissions there? Anybody? No? Okay. Then we will declare the minutes approved and we'll go down to planning. And so we're going to leave this meeting, go into the public hearing for the final consideration for the land use bylaw changes for the Sidewalk Cafe and also Oakland Drive Public Hearing. So leave this meeting, jump into the other one, and I'll see you in a minute. Is to deal with, we'll start with the order I have it in. Can we change the order or does it matter? Does it matter what order? Just noting that Catherine is here to deal with Oakland Drive. Can we do Oakland Drive first or does it matter?
You certainly can.
Okay. If nobody minds, why don't we start with item 6.2, which is the Oakland Drive Public Hearing, second reading. So all the statutory requirements have been posted. And I'm just going through my sheet that Sandra gives me. So everything's been advertised as needed. And so I will turn this over to the planner for an overview.
Okay. Thank you. Chairperson Mitchell, I am just going to share my screen here for the presentation. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
There we go. Okay, great. So, thank you. This is an application, the second reading, or yes, sorry, the public hearing for the development agreement for the multi-unit residential on Oakland Drive. The complete application was submitted to the town in January for a development agreement to permit the construction of 14 townhouse units in three blocks on a private laneway on Oakland Drive. The current property is zoned comprehensive residential and the surrounding zoning is a mix of single unit residential, a two-unit comprehensive and high-density residential, as well as parkland. And the surrounding uses are single detached houses, some semi-detached, some multi-unit residential, as well as woodland gardens that we all enjoy. The proposal, well, this property actually has an existing development agreement on it from 2012, which was for 16 units of semi-detached housing on a private laneway. Two units were constructed to date and then the land has changed hands a few times since that agreement. So this public hearing is for this new proposal from the new owner, which maintains several key features such as the private laneway, 14 units, and the trail connection to Woodland Gardens. So this is the rendering of the townhouse units and the elevation drawing showing sort of what the fronts of the buildings will look like. So again, they're proposing 14 units, one building of seven units, such as the elevation drawing that you see here, as well as a four unit and a three unit that all look similar. The property will be consolidated into a single lot. Again, it will be a private laneway. There'll be two access points to Jubilee Road. There'll be two-story and two-bedroom units. There'll be parking for each unit in the front and they'll be maintaining that trail connection to Woodland Garden. So you can see on the site plan in front of you for the proposed development up at the top of your screen. And I don't know if you can actually see my mouse because I don't have my laser pointer that I would have in council chambers. Okay. So this is the trail connection into Woodland Gardens. This is the property line here and this little finger of land is actually owned by the town. So this trail would come down, it's proposed to come down and connect in with the existing trails. And this is Jubilee Road. This is north, so the river is at the top of the screen and up the hill, Exhibition Drive is at the bottom of the screen. So there's the seven unit, four unit, and three units. And they are proposing a future dwelling, but that is not part of the existing development agreement. There will be a variance provided for within the development agreement for the subdivision requirements, just for a minor reduction in the street frontage. We held a public meeting virtually on May 6th, which was the first public meeting that the town held that way. No members of the public attended the virtual meeting, but the presentations were streamed live on Facebook. We received two relevant comments at that time. And we received two written submissions via email. We did all the required notifications to adjacent property owners and through the local newspaper in advance of that meeting. And we accepted comments up till the 18th of May. So the key features that we negotiated within the proposed development agreement that you're considering this evening are that it's permitting the use of 14 units, that future additional dwelling will require an amendment. And then the other features of the development agreement are organized under these particular headings here, so the building characteristics, landscape lighting, site access, parking, et cetera. And I'm going to walk you through a few of the key ones. So with the landscaping and buffering requirements, we negotiated a 30-foot natural green space required at the back where the property interacts with the paths and the town pond brook and the trails through Woodland Gardens. So you can just vaguely make it out. This is a super, we superimposed the site plan, an older version of it over top of an aerial photo here. So there'll be a 30-foot tree buffer, natural green space, is what we're calling it. No cutting without permission for vegetation that's larger than a four-inch caliper. There'll be stormwater management facilities will be allowed within that. And they will need to submit a landscape plan prior to the issuance of the development permit. And the pathway to Woodland Garden, of course, is required with an easement. For site access and parking, again, it's a private asphalt laneway. There's parking spaces per unit. There will also be some communal bicycle parking for a minimum of seven bikes. And again, we made that variance for the lot frontage via the agreement. It was a 2.75 meter variance. Sanitary and water services, the servicing will be built by the developer. The water will be turned over to the Public Service Commission of Bridgewater. Easements will be required for that water. Any existing deficiencies in the current servicing that's been built to date is to be corrected prior to any occupancy permissions. And those deficiencies were listed as a schedule to the development agreement. For stormwater management, all post-development peak flows must be equal or less than the pre-development. So the stormwater management plan that will be finalized is to be approved by the town engineer prior to the development permit issuance. And the stormwater management facilities that there will be permitted in that natural open space. So they're proposing bioswale at the rear of the property and it's really aimed at detaining the water and slowing that release and sort of having a gradual discharge of stormwater. And the substantive identification of the substantive matters, sorry, is just the single one, the residential to a maximum of 14 units. So any additional units added to this site will require a substantive amendment, which is effectively a new development agreement process. So it has that public component to it. But it would also trigger things such as a wastewater study and any offsetting measures and analysis of any other relevant site conditions if things have changed. And again, that notification of neighbors, the public meeting and the public hearing. So staff recommend that town council give second and final consideration to the development agreement to permit collective multi-unit residential development to a maximum of 14 units as proposed in the document.
Thank you. Any members of council have questions of the planner at this point before we move forward a little bit? Counselor Graves?
What were the comments from the public?
They were concerned, there were two comments, the Facebook comments or the comments received by email. I guess three of the four were related to how close the development was getting to the trails at Woodland Gardens. And how that, if they were going to clear right to the property line, that was the main concern. And then another adjacent property owner was concerned about the site access and the proximity of the driveways, but a traffic impact statement had been prepared and analyzed and was accepted by the traffic authority as being fine. So it was a change from the 2012 development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Michael, did you have another question?
Yeah, I do, Mary. So the pathway that connects to the duck pond, who maintains that?
That will be primarily ours to maintain. If you recall, I pointed out how we have quite a finger of land that sticks up to the side. So the vast majority of that pathway will be ours. But it will be a great connection and amenity loop for our residents.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, moving on. This is where the developer, so Catherine Demke is here with us. So this is an opportunity for a brief presentation or some remarks by the developer. So I'll turn that over to you, Catherine.
Thank you very much. So we have worked with the town over the last year quite intensely and with the planning department. And we are now sort of, you know, in the final process. And we have everybody sort of basically waiting in the, waiting to move forward. Right now, we've got the construction company, the architectural stuff you've already seen. And we're basically ready to go as soon as the appeal period expires. And the intention with this development, both with what we have at the present and then potentially a future further development of an additional seven units, the intention is to provide housing that would range between apartment living and, you know, living as a, living in a detached kind of house setting. And because I think that there is a bit of a gap there within Bridgewater, this kind of housing is not like townhouses have, there are not that many in the Bridgewater area, but it would be very useful for some people that might be interested in coming to Bridgewater or that are living in Bridgewater to, you know, to have that kind of facility here. And unless you have any questions, that's what I have to say.
Any questions? Counselor Thorburn?
Yes, and just the 14 units, they're all going to be done in the one phase at the one time, not staggered. Is that correct?
That is correct. So if we can commence construction, let's say towards the latter part of what we had hoped to the latter part of July or early August, the construction, the intention is to get the buildings tight by the end of the year and to have everything completed, the full development completed by about May of next. We need 10 months. That's where we are. Yeah. So this is not phased, this is a one-time construction of all units.
Great. Counselor Graves?
Yeah, for Catherine, could the units be considered affordable for families? Are these, is this a high-end development or is it a mid-range development or?
It's between mid-range and high-end, right? I mean, it's going to be elevated from a plain apartment, but it's also not so that they are not sort of economically interesting, right? And so there are some features about it, like for instance, you will have seen this, but each of these townhouses will have sort of this entrance area and then they will have brick beside it, right? And so the facade is bricked and then you have the entrance area in wood. And those kinds of things, you know, are things that, because what we want to achieve is a very attractive sort of environment for the people that rent these houses. And Oakland Drive is, you know, certainly once we get to the, we get to complete the road and all of this kind of stuff, then it's going to be a very attractive little area.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
And I should say it's for rent, not for sale.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. I don't think we have any members of the public that are registered to participate. So the next step is to close your remarks by the chair and then moving on to closing this so that council can make a decision. So this, I mean, this is the final or the second reading. It's a pretty exciting proposal. It's nice to see Bridgewater continue to grow and grow with some really attractive developments. So I'm excited about that. So if hearing no questions, we'll close off the public hearing and move to council's decision. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Your Worship.
Counselor Fager, yes?
Yes. Motion that town council for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the proposed development agreement and enter into the development agreement to construct collective multiple unit residential development, 14 units, on the property located on the lands of lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, and the road parcel at Oakland Drive in a manner similar to the draft development agreement dated July 2nd, as shown in Appendix A of Document 20-083B, and that the mayor and chief administrative officer are hereby authorized to execute the agreement and any other required instruments only within the timeframe described in the development agreement. Should the document not be signed within the timeframe described in the development agreement, council shall consider and request to sign the development agreement as a new application and follow the entire process required by the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you, seconded by, we'll second that, Andrew. Deputy Mayor Tanner, further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, all those unfair, we'll go around. Counselor McGinnis? You got to unmute there, Counselor McGinnis?
Yay.
Counselor Fager?
Yay.
Counselor Thorburn?
Yay.
Counselor Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
I myself am in favor. So thank you very much, that has passed. Thank you for coming, Catherine. We'll move on to our next public hearing, which is final consideration for the land use bylaw Sidewalk Cafes. So we'll open this public hearing. And again, the statutory requirements have all been met as directed. And so we'll turn this over to our planner for review.
Mayor Mitchell, if I could, I'll clear a conflict on this just because I currently have a sidewalk cafe, so to speak, in place. And just, yeah, it's just easier that way.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay. I will share my screen. Can you see that?
Yep.
Great. Okay. Yeah, so this is the public hearing for the amendments to the land use bylaw regarding sidewalk cafes and outdoor cafes. So places across Canada have been making some changes recently to help businesses recover from the closures during the COVID-19 pandemic. So this kind of came out of that. And one of those is to provide more opportunities for outdoor seating, to help businesses accommodate social distancing and lower patron capacity. So currently in Bridgewater, sidewalk cafes are permitted, but they are currently only permitted on existing elevated sidewalks. So these amendments will provide a bit more flexibility. So the amendments, or there are amendments being proposed to the Sidewalk Cafe bylaw and the land use bylaw, but this is the public hearing just for those for the land use bylaw. Earlier, a request was made by Furkinstein Brewery to lease three parking spaces in the town center parking lot. And originally, it was anticipated during the reports regarding this that a lease agreement would be required in addition to these amendments, but a lease is not required. The use would be permitted through the Sidewalk Cafe bylaw, which includes details regarding insurance, patio design, and patio location. So whenever anyone wanted to go through that, those would be considered by staff. So the amendments to the land use bylaw would enable proposed amendments to the Sidewalk Cafe bylaw to permit sidewalk cafes on other adjacent town-owned property, not just elevated public sidewalks. Currently, the land use bylaw also addresses accessory buildings and structures, but not accessory uses. So the amendments would permit accessory uses on adjacent town-owned property as permitted by the Sidewalk Cafe bylaw. So it's kind of putting those two, getting those two in line. And also, outdoor cafes on private property rather than the town property like the sidewalk are not subject to the Sidewalk Cafe bylaw. And currently, the land use bylaw requires that in addition to existing development that results in an increase of more than 50% to the existing number of parking spaces in a parking lot shall not be permitted unless off-street parking and loading areas are provided and maintained in accordance with the bylaw. And this increase may happen because parking requirements for certain uses are based on gross floor area. So with these amendments, it would remove this requirement of additional parking. So again, providing a bit more flexibility for those who wanted to have an outdoor cafe, even if it wasn't on the sidewalk. So a little bit short and sweet, but the recommendation is that town council give second and final consideration to the proposed text amendments to the land use bylaw to accommodate outdoor cafes, as was contained in Appendix A of the report.
Great, thank you. Questions from members of council to the planner? We've run through this before, so this is final consideration. So we've had our questions answered, I think. And we don't have, we don't have the developer here and we don't have any members of the public that registered for the public hearing. Just one last question, if anyone, one last call for questions? If not, I will close off this public hearing. And I mean, my closing remarks would just be, whatever we can do to help businesses recover during COVID, and this is a big part of it, I think. So what is the decision, what is the will of council? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I will, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Thorburn.
I would move that town council of the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the proposed text amendments give second and final consideration to the proposed text amendments to the land use bylaw to accommodate outdoor cafes as per Document 20-088B.
Thank you. Seconded by?
Second that.
Counselor Graves. Further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor McGinnis?
Yay.
Counselor Fager?
Yay.
Counselor Thorburn?
Yay.
Counselor Graves?
Yay.
And I am also in favor, so that has passed. Wonderful. Thank you. So we will now leave the public hearing site. I don't know what to call it, Teams meeting, and move to our regular meeting. And we'll begin again our regular scheduled council meetings. So I'll see you in the other, on the other meeting. Okay, thank you. We're going to resume our regular scheduled council meeting after the public hearings have now ended. And we'll go, we're continuing down with planning and we're at 6.3. So the planning analysis report for the rezoning of 42 Riverview Drive. And I think Nelson is going to be joining us.
Yes, this is my first one online, so bear with me. But I, so I'm just going to share my screen now. Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So staff received an application to rezone 42 Riverview Drive from single unit residential R1 to two-unit residential in March. And to do so requires a map amendment to the zoning map of the land use bylaw. Essentially, what the property owner is trying to do is convert the existing basement into a second dwelling unit and rent it out to anyone who wants to rent it out. So the zoning of the property currently is single unit residential, as shown in the map in gray. And the surrounding zoning consists of primarily single unit residential, two-unit residential. There is a little bit of specialty commercial C8, and there's also a little bit of commercial, sorry, comprehensive residential. The, the surrounding land uses are single and two-unit dwellings, and there's also an automotive shop and some undeveloped land to the west. So if we look at the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy, it shows the subject property and the surrounding area designated as low-density residential with comprehensive residential and open space nearby. The low-density residential designation in the municipal planning strategy supports rezoning from single unit residential to two-unit residential as this land designation is reserved for single units and two-unit dwellings. So the rezoning is required because the R1 zone doesn't permit two-unit dwellings unless it's through a residential conversion. However, this conversion is only for buildings that were constructed prior to August 27, 1975. And the building permit was issued for this building in 1991. So as you can see on the chart, the only difference is in the two zones is the permission for two-unit dwellings as of right in the R2 zone and the ability to convert to up to three units in the R2 zone for buildings prior to 1970, built before 1975. So a public participation meeting was held on June 24th using Microsoft Teams. There were no members of the public in attendance, nor were there any comments received by email or through the development applications webpage. When we look at policy in the municipal planning strategies for this application specific to residential development, we see that this development is located in the low-density residential zone in the future land use map, which is reserved for single and two-unit residential development. And single and two-unit dwellings are viewed as compatible and comparable to each other. And a two-unit dwelling provides a slightly different housing option in, in a predominantly single unit neighborhood, but it's not a substantial change in density. So if we look at IM6 of the municipal planning strategy, most of the policies are met, meaning that it's compatible with surrounding land uses. Based on a 2018 sanitary stormwater master plan, new developments in town are not permitted to increase in frequency or volume of overflows of the wastewater system. And therefore, engineering made the comment that offsetting flows would be necessary in order to be compliant with this plan because of the additional capacity that, that another unit would, would require. The road network is adequate to support the change. There's no known environmental termination or constraints. And any costs associated with any necessary changes will be the developer's responsibility should council approve the rezoning. And overall, the proposed development is supported by the municipal planning strategy and all other town bylaws and regulations. So to summarize some of the analysis of this application, the single unit residential zone and two-unit residential zones are both part of the low-density residential designation of future land use map. And council has included 42 Riverview Drive in the low-density resident, under the low-density residential designation. And it's really a light densification of, with the additional unit that's proposed, which is compatible with the intent of, of the designation. And properties in areas with designations are reserved for single unit, two-unit, and semi-detached residential development, as well as three-unit residential development in certain conditions, which this development would meet. So areas that have not been met against policy IM6 include the adequacy of sanitary services, water services, and stormwater management services, and the financial ability of the town to absorb any costs relating to the proposal. So an approach by, recommended by engineering to address this gap in meeting these policies is to set adequate rate, tax rates and other associated races, such as wastewater fees needed to cover operating and replacement costs. And so if we look at some precedent, we can refer to a recent application at 12 Kensington Court, which was rezoned from single unit to two unit. And on the subject of setting wastewater fees or offsetting measures, staff consulted the town solicitor on, on what, what options were available. And the opinion provided by the solicitor was that the town currently has a legislative gap and cannot manage wastewater overflows on a particular property or caused by such a property via an offsetting agreement. So with this considered, council can consider the land use bylaw amendment, having reviewed all of the other considerations under policy IM6. So the recommendation from staff is that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the proposed map amendments of the land use bylaw as contained in Appendix A and schedule a public hearing for August 10th, 2020, during the regular council meeting. And that's the end of the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Nelson. Questions for members of council? This is to refer to public hearing. So we'll have a few more times to review this. So I just want to make sure there are no questions. Now, is someone prepared to make a motion?
I will, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I'd move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the proposed map amendments of the land use bylaw as contained in Appendix A of 20-103A and schedule a public hearing for August 10th, 2020, during the regular meeting of council.
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second the motion.
Counselor Fager, thank you. Further discussion?
Question.
Question is being called. Counselor McGinnis, ERN.
Yay.
Counselor Fager?
Yay.
Counselor Thorburn?
Yay.
Counselor Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I'm also in favor, so that will be, that's passed. That will go to a public hearing scheduled for August 10th. All right. Thank you again, Nelson. We'll move down to our final item in planning, which is 6.4, confirmation of financial contribution for a green municipal fund application. And I thought I saw Greg is probably here or Tammy. One of the two are going to speak to it, I think.
We're both, we're both here. So this is a late addition. If you remember, at the last council meeting, council considered a report from staff with respects to a joint application that would be made under the Green Municipal Fund through FCM for clean energy financing. And this would involve a partnership with Clean Energy where we would apply for a loan as well as a grant through FCM. So we were looking at for Bridgewater, a $4.8 million loan and a $2 million grant. And at the time, we had some concern about our debt service ratios and whether those would be impacted because the legislation in Nova Scotia requires that municipalities borrow from the municipal finance corp. So this money would have to run through them. And there was concern that it would impact our debt service ratio and we wouldn't be able to do other capital projects that we know we've committed to. And also that it would impact our operating debt service ratio. So how, how much we're allowed to borrow in a year for short-term borrowings, which we do, until we can lock it into a long-term loan. We've confirmed that those aren't issues, that it won't impact our debt service ratio because you have revenue coming in through the, through the payments on tax bills to offset your debt cost. And the operating piece, we would, we would put it in under our capital fund as opposed to our operating fund, which we don't typically do, but we can do. So we'll be looking at that, so it doesn't impact our short-term borrowing limits as well. So we're getting ready to make the application. And one last thing that wasn't highlighted at the last meeting is that we, the town will need to make a confirmation of financial contribution to the application as well. So you have with your agenda document that said, so what we would have to commit. And you see that we have that broken down into our current pace financing. So annually, right now, the town normally passes a motion, or council does, that commits up to $100,000 in financing for the PACE program. So we will loan up to $100,000. We do that annually, so I don't have the authority to assign, sign a letter that says we're going to do that for the next four years. I would need council to agree to that and commit to that, that we would, we would do that. And then the next is 618,592, which would be our contribution of funding from the, well, basically, Smart Cities or Energized Bridgewater. So it's grant money that, that we've received through, through that application. So the total contribution would be $1,018,592. And we would have to commit to providing that with the funding application.
So the biggest difference here is that we're committing over the four years instead of just every year talking about it.
Primarily in terms of like what, what becomes directly out of, out of our accounts. I mean, technically, the grant money from, from, from Smart Cities is in our accounts too. So we direct kind of per the requirements of the grant how that's spent. So you would still have to agree to do that. And also, the $400,000 is what we, normally we, we borrow for that. If we had $100,000 worth of requests, we would borrow for that, loan that out, and then the payments would pay back.
Right. Okay. Questions? Counselor Thorburn?
Yes, Tammy, it's not going on.
There you go.
Yeah. You got it now?
Yep.
Yes, Tammy, out of that $100,000, how much are we spending per year? I don't think we were spending that much, were we?
No, we, we, I don't have the exact number, but it was very, very small. The intent of this program is that we would be using the grant, the grant money to incentivize applicants, property owners, homeowners to apply for the upgrades. So it might offset some of their costs, pay for the assessment fees, whatever the program ends up doing. But the idea is that you would eventually see a full utilization of that, plus the funding that we get from FCM, the grant, the grant money from FCM, or sorry, the loan from FCM.
So if I remember quickly, are we still partnering with MODL and was it Digby or somewhere? Wasn't it three of us into that?
For the clean contract?
Yeah.
Greg, do you know the all the municipalities?
Yeah, there are three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There are nine municipalities, including Bridgewater, submitting this proposal to FCM. So Clean would be administrating nine separate municipalities, including Digby and so forth. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Now, Greg, if you had anything else to add or just here as, as our, our tech guru?
Yeah, no, Tammy summarized it well. You know, they, we, we do have a breakdown of what the grant funding would be used for, and most of it is going towards, you know, incentives and rebates to make clean financing, PACE financing rather even more attractive, as well as improved marketing and so forth. So yeah, Tammy did a great job, job summarizing that.
So what we're looking for tonight is looking for a motion to approve the, the $400,000, so the $100,000 a year over the next four years, plus the $618,000.
Yeah.
Is someone prepared to work that into a motion? Or do you have more questions?
You can refresh your escribed screens.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Counselor Fager?
That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater confirmed a four-year commitment for the green municipal funding application, application totaling $1,018,592.
Thank you. Seconded by? Counselor McGinnis. Further discussion?
Question.
Question is being called. Counselor McGinnis, ERN.
Yay.
Counselor Fager?
Yay.
Counselor Thorburn?
Yay.
Counselor Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I am in favor as well. So motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Greg. That's great. This project is just trucking right along. Our next item is down to correspondence, correspondence for action. We have a request from Christopher Craig, who wants to host a, a concert event in support of Health Services Foundation. So he's requesting some in-kind support to a value of up to $500 for Rock for a Cause 2020. I don't know if there's any questions regarding that?
Would you like a motion? It seems right up our alley.
Yeah. And so if someone's prepared to make a motion, go ahead, please, Deputy Mayor.
All right. I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve in-kind support valued at up to $500 to Rock for a Cause 2020 as per the request from Christopher Craig, contained in Document 20-125.
Great. Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second that.
Counselor Graves. Any discussion?
Question.
Question being called. Counselor McGinnis, ERN.
Yay.
Counselor Fager?
Yay.
Counselor Thorburn?
Yay.
Counselor Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I'm in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is Cornwallis Street Citizen Inquiry. And this is, it was, the inquiry was to have council look at renaming Cornwallis Street. As we know, this is, it's a very common street name and it's, it's across the province that municipalities are being asked to look at this. I can tell you that I just received, someone had a petition going around the community asking us to rename the street. So I just received about 20 minutes ago the results of that. So they had over 200 signatures on that. So I will share that, send that around as part of the information. But it was after the meeting started that I received it. So what we do, just for members of the public, when we receive requests or when we are naming a street, we do have a street naming, we do have a naming policy that we do follow. So the procedure is to refer that matter, whether it's of naming a park or naming a street, to our Heritage Advisory Committee. So they, they are the ones that are tasked with doing that research into naming things. With the, with the street being Cornwallis Street and, and the timeliness of all that is happening around the world when it comes to anti-racism, or racism rather, and Black Lives Matter and Indigenous peoples, we need to also, I think, at least in my opinion, put that anti-racism lens on it. And so the motion that you have before you, if council so chooses, is not only to refer to the Heritage Advisory Committee, but also that they consult the Bridgewater Anti-Racism Task Force prior to making recommendations to council. And so working together, they will find. And so working together, they will find, I'm hoping, the best path forward. Are there any questions? Again, we're not making, for the public, we're not making a decision tonight. We are just referring this to a group for that. Councilor Thorburn?
Yes, Your Worship, we do have a bank of names, whether it be cultural, historical, geographical, geology, industrial, or commemoration to veterans list now that we have. And we do refer them from time to time. And yeah, it is our responsibility to provide names to council, which has a final decision on what name we use, but it goes to the Heritage Committee, Heritage Advisory Committee.
I know that, I was reading some comments on, online, I know not always the most fun thing to do. And I think, and I'm just going to speak for myself, I don't want to speak for council, but I think there needs to be a recognition that while this may, this name, with the Cornwallis Street name, might not be offensive to some, I think it's important that we recognize that it is to others. And that for members of our community, the name Cornwallis brings up, I would say, a negative history of someone who did murder many people. And so that there is, there is a negative connotations that surround that name. And I think it's, at the very least imperative that we are open to hearing that and understanding it instead of dismissing it. I was disappointed to see people just very quickly dismissing it without at least being willing to understand why this name is hurtful. So those are just my comments on that. Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, and that comes from, again, I don't have the button here for my hand up, so I'll have to interrupt.
That's okay.
So in future, are all street names going to go to the Anti-Racism Task Force or just as one?
Well, at the moment, we're, because of the sensitive nature certainly of the name Cornwallis, I think it's imperative that it go through the Anti-Racism Task Force for input. I think as that group, we're meeting again tomorrow. And so as that group is brand new and just finding its footings and, and we're going to be discussing at our meeting tomorrow whether this would like to come, they would like to come to council to be an official committee of the town. That will kind of determine its path forward and, and their input on town policies, things like that. So we're at early stages with the task force. So I can't, I can't answer your question definitively yet, Councilor McGinnis.
Would it not be proper to have someone from that committee to sit on the Heritage Advisory Committee permanently?
I think certainly there's an advantage to being a little bit more diverse on many of our committees. But I, whether they have someone that sits on there or they're part of the decision-making process just as a sounding board, I think these are suggestions that we can take as we move this forward. Councilor Thorburn, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, yes, Your Worship, and I'm along where Bill is. We have a couple of vacancies on our committee and certainly we could use some input and be a little more diverse. And we certainly welcome a member or two to our committee if so, if you so desire. I think that would be a great step forward. And where we are dealing with heritage and culture, it would certainly add a different lens to our viewing different topics and their value would be instrumental in our committee.
Wonderful, I will, I'll bring that up at our meeting tomorrow, Councilor Thorburn, thank you. Two vacancies, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Only one chair or two?
One, okay.
One.
Okay, I will raise that. Other questions? If not, is someone prepared to make a motion?
I can make that.
I will, Your Worship.
Oh, I think Councilor Graves beat you to it, Councilor Thorburn.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the matter of renaming Cornwallis Street to the Heritage Advisory Committee and request that the HAC consult the Bridgewater Anti-Racism Task Force prior to make a recommendation to council.
Thank you, seconded by?
I will second it then.
Councilor Thorburn, further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, Councilor McGinnis?
Yay.
Councilor Fager?
Yay.
Councilor Thorburn?
Yay.
Councilor Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I'm in favor, thank you very much. We'll look forward to that group doing their due diligence and then bringing it back to council for further discussion and debate. We are now moving to reports and recommendations, and we have the 2020, 2021, it's on 20th, Capital Budget Monthly Review Number Four. So just for members of the public, this is a little bit of a deviation from what we normally do, but as we said, as we went into the pandemic, that we wanted to, as we progressed through it, make sure that we were still on track finance-wise in order to make sure we're not biting off more than we can chew. And fair to say that the Town of Bridgewater is doing well through the pandemic. But here we have August's list here. So I'm going to turn that over to our CAO for some review.
And Larry's here as well. So our, yeah, so our list is definitely dwindling. Majority of them, actually, all of them are engineering-related projects. Two of them you approved at the last, or addressed at the last meeting, and that had to do with the north park hay repairs, the electrical and cedar, and then the aesthetic improvements as well. So those were approved in June, so we're just dealing with the ones below that. Leaving only a few left in September, October. So I'm just thinking, have any questions about the items? If you want a refresher on what they are, we're certainly able to do that for you if you want.
Any questions? Members of the council? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Just a refresher on the arena 150.
Mm-hmm. So those are renovations that were proposed to make room for transit at the arena. So looking at a bay door and straightening up that area for our transit and improving it for our park staff who also use the facility as well. And just on that, we did, we did make a grant application. We just submitted it today to look at ramps that would provide accessibility for, for that facility, for employees or public that may be accessing that as well.
And just sort of tied to that a bit, the farmer's market is doing well. Have they commented about moving out of the arena? I see Halifax is doing that kind of thing and?
They're moving outside the arena a bit, like they're utilizing the parking area a bit more in the, and along the side and behind where the seniors' part used to be. So they're bringing in their Airstream or the cafe they had. That should be showing up next week, it's not there already. And a lot of their vendors are wanting to move outside as well. So I think they're happy at the site, lots of parking, and they're able to set up well. So I'm not too sure what that means for next year, but they may, we haven't had those conversations yet about long-term, but if you remember, we did do that, that study that kind of looked at how we could make the arena into something with a bit more kind of community and economic development type twist to it. But the 150 right here kind of fits into that because it's looking at that part that we would have dedicated to transit regardless, even with the community aspect that was talked about for futures.
Other questions on any of those items? Okay, so Deputy Mayor Tanner, yeah?
Sorry, just one more, the crosswalk is still deferred. Where do we sit with that currently?
The cross, the crosswalk in front of?
The school.
The school, I apologize.
Oh, yeah, we'll have to do a check-in with them. We have that, the school, the superintendent asked that we defer that until he had the ability to consult and determine exactly what it is they want to see there. So I haven't heard anything since, but we can do a checking with them to see.
Yeah, I think we're about due for our quarterly check-in with Mr. Ash.
I think it's sometime this summer, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll make sure that's top of the agenda. So I'm not hearing any changes, so that, I mean, that was passed in the budget, so that, that will go ahead. So thank you, and I really appreciate these, these check-ins. I think it's also good for the public to see what's, what's coming up. Our next item is Lindbergh County Senior Safety Program, June 2020 Report. And as always, I would, I would recommend that members of the public take a look at this. It's, I keep saying it sounds like a broken record, I don't know what we would do without this program in this community, pandemic or no pandemic. And it's unbelievable what they do. So that's, that's there for you to review. Our next item is the Recommendation of the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee, facade Improvement Funding Request for 750 King.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, yeah, we can have a motion on the floor, sure.
I move the Town Council of Town of Bridgewater provide grants to improve and beautify public sides, buildings in downtown business, in the downtown business district, specifically in response to the application submission as follows, 750 King Street, $5,000.
Thank you, is there a seconder? I'll second it, Your Worship. Everyone's jumping in. All right, that's Councilor Thorburn, thank you. So this, is there a staff person just to go and speak to that?
Yes, I can speak to that. So this is for the River Pub. So he will be, sorry, my escribe, of course, just, he'll be re-cladding the front, adding, sorry, I'm just pulling up the application here, but he'll be re-cladding the front in, the colors are, sorry about this, everything just froze on me.
That's how it works.
It is, it is. So there'll be a copper penny metal roof, black onyx, synthetic cladding, it'll have the, the steel wool, black steel wool color. Anyway, the River Pub cutout, sort of lettering across the front, adding windows and molding across the front, so new framed windows. So it's going to be a substantive change to the look and feel of the River Pub as we know it right now. So it's a very exciting, very exciting makeover for the building. And it does have across where the lettering will be, it's called an eyebrow relief or a string course, sort of some architectural detailing to sort of separate the first, the first floor from the second floor.
It'll be quite. It is sharp looking.
Very sharp looking, we're very excited.
Uh, Councilor Thorburn, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I brought it up last time we done this, and it's nice you mentioned the River Pub. I'd like to see that in the document itself, River Pub, 750 King Street. And going forward, the business should be named along with the address so the public would know who we're talking about, please. Does that make sense?
Duly noted.
Okay, further questions? We have a mover and a seconder ready for the vote.
Question.
Question being called, Councilor McGinnis?
Yay.
Councilor Fager?
Yay.
Councilor Thorburn?
Yay.
Councilor Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I myself am in favor, motion is carried, and I'm excited. There's a lot of renovation and work being done on King Street right now, which is nice to see. All right, Building Inspection Report for June 2020. It was just a month ago where I said, wow, COVID really hit building report. And then June came along and that changed, as we have some numbers that are exceeding last year, which was a good year. So that's there for the public's perusal, but yeah, that's a, it's a big number. Deputy Mayor?
Just a quick question, do we have any idea of how we're faring with regard to deed transfer tax this year?
Um, we actually, no, no, not yet. They're behind, like, so we don't get the reports for a month or two after the property transactions have occurred.
Okay.
We should know by the end of this, well, I'd say by the end of this month, we should be getting something from them that would indicate where we are.
That'll be an interesting number, knowing that houses are selling very, very quickly.
Yeah.
In Bridgewater. So if there's any questions to that, you can reach out to Larry's team for, for the questions on that report. Our next item is the Connect Two Program, the Active Transportation Plan Implementation. So I'll turn that over to staff for some input and sharing.
So Mackenzie, are you speaking to this?
Um, I was going to say, but if you wanted to, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Sure. Yeah, so staff applied to the Connect Two Grant to help move forward our, kind of the action items for our AT plan. So a little bit ago, council had requested an implementation plan for the action or the AT plan. And this is kind of one of those first steps to help moving it forward. So the intent is to work with a consultant to develop some design criteria for how to incorporate active transportation into existing streets. And then some recommendations of how to perhaps revise the town's designing construction standards for a new street, again, to take into consideration active transportation. So an expression of interest was submitted and it was successful. So with the application, it is required that the, that it's either the project is part of a plan, which this is, but it hasn't fully been approved yet, or it's, it has a letter of support from council. So that's what, what staff is requesting.
Pretty straightforward, any questions on that? Hearing done, someone prepared to make a motion, please? All right, Councilor Graves, please.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater provide a letter of support for the implementation of the renewed Active Transportation Plan to be eligible for the Connect Two Program as per attachment A of document 20-128.
Thank you, seconded by?
I'll second the motion.
Councilor Fager, thank you, further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, Councilor McGinnis?
Yay.
Councilor Fager?
Yay.
Councilor Thorburn?
Yay.
Councilor Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I'm in favor. So thank you, that has passed, and we'll go down to Business arising and unfinished business. Amendments to Policy 18, Development Agreements and Policy 34, Public Hearing Agenda and So I don't know if we planned this, Tammy, I don't know if you can review it, or Jessica perhaps, if someone can for the public?
I can, just one second. So yes, so these are some housekeeping amendments to the, so Policy 18 Development Agreements is to add in the ability to, the authorization to execute any additional instruments that may be required as part of that development agreement. So with the example of the public hearing from this evening, easements are required for infrastructure and for the trail. So that's a, an authority, the approval of that also grants approval of seeking those easements and undertaking that work. The approval was always implicit in the development agreement approval, but this just makes it much more explicit. And so it's just a little housekeeping amendment recommended by the town solicitor. And for Policy 34, the Public Hearing Agenda and Procedures, again, they're small little housekeeping items to change some of the language. It hadn't been updated in many, many years. So instead of developer, it's applicant, and there's a few others that are there in front of you, also reducing the amount of time that the developer, or rather, the applicant may speak to council from 20 minutes down to 10 at a minimum. So those are the, the two policy changes in front of you.
Do any of these changes do anything to streamline the process in terms of reducing time?
No, our time is legislated.
Okay.
So no, these are just cleaning up some housekeeping pieces regarding the requirements of the legislation, so no.
Done. There's only so much we can do. Any questions from members of council? Now, someone prepared to make a motion, please?
It looks like that was already moved and seconded by Councilor Fager and McDonald.
Sorry, still it needs to be done. That notice was given, but it hasn't been approved.
I'll make the motion, given Councilor McDonald's not here.
Thank you.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve Policies 18, Development Agreements and 34, Public Hearing Agenda and Procedures under the municipal government and the Act as presented in documents 20-112 and 20-113 effective immediately.
Thank you, seconded by?
I'll second the motion.
Councilor Fager? Your name's already there, so it works out perfectly.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, Council McGuinness.
Yay.
Council Frazier.
Yay.
Council Thorburn.
Yay.
Council Graves.
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yay.
In favor, thank you. Motion is carried. Uh, item ten point two, second and final reading of proposed alternative voting method bylaw currently chapter one ninety four. So for the public, we have a municipal election coming up in the fall. And, uh, in order to, uh, figure out how we're going to do the voting, we have to, uh, we have to have a proposed, uh, alternative voting method bylaw. And so this will, um, move us forward to the all either online or telephone and/or telephone voting. Um, so I want to make sure people know it's not just, um, just online on your computer. You can vote by telephone. So we're trying to move forward in the most, uh, accessible and safest way in our strange COVID environment. So that's before you. I don't know, Tammy, if you had anything to add to that?
Uh, just that it's, it's written in a generic way so that, um, we don't have to amend the bylaw every election year. So council can choose, decide by motion if they want to have e-voting only, if they want to have a combination of paper, e-voting, telephone voting, it's a menu they can choose from. So.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from members of council? This is the second and final reading, so we've kind of gone through this. Hearing done. Someone prepared to make a motion?
I will, your worship.
Council Thorburn, thank you.
I move that town council of the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of alternate voting method bylaw as presented in document twenty dash zero, one, nine, eight, adopted as bylaw chapter two oh five and authorize staff to publish all public notice pursuant to section one sixty eight of the municipal government act.
Seconded by.
I'll second that.
Council Graves. We've had time for discussion. Ready for the question? Question being called, Council McGuinness.
Reluctant, yes.
Council Frazier.
Yay.
Council Thorburn.
Yay.
Council Graves.
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yay.
I'm enthusiastic, yes. I just have to counter your, uh, your reluctance. Motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, next item, ten point three is second and final reading of the sidewalk cafe bylaw.
I will again be declaring a conflict on this item.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Tanner. Um, yeah, I don't know if the C A O just wants a quick public update.
This is a real quick amendment to, simple amendment to our sidewalk cafe bylaw to allow for sidewalk cafes, not only on sidewalks, but adjacent town property.
Perfect. Thank you. Pretty straightforward. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, your worship.
Thank you, Council Frazier.
That town council for the town of Bridgewater approved the second reading for the revised chapter twenty, sorry, chapter two, two zero one sidewalk cafe bylaw as presented in document twenty dash zero, eight, eight, C, adopt as bylaw and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty eight of the municipal government act.
Thank you. Seconded by.
I'll second it.
Oh, I don't know. That was close. I think Council Thorburn was, uh, was just a little ahead of you, Council Graves. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing done, Council McGuinness.
Yay.
Council Frazier.
Yay.
Council Thorburn.
Yay.
Council Graves.
Yay.
And I'm in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Tanner can come back. Our next item, uh, is just to give notice, um, notice to rescind the motion, uh, for Ecole de la Rivière Sud. Um, there was a request for, uh, a grant made for an event, um, and then that kind of changed, so we awarded it, but the, um, I don't know how to summarize it. The terms of what it was meant for have kind of changed. And so, um, that change has, has triggered the need to rescind the motion. I don't know if the C A O wants to elaborate on my very poor description or not.
Sure. Um, when, when the request was made, it was, um, it's just the timing of when the request came versus when, um, the event happened. So, uh, we were under the understanding that the, um, parent group were not able to access the funds that had been fundraised for the event. Um, and, uh, they in fact were able to. So that, that request was made before they accessed those funds. And we became aware of that. And, uh, so they had the event and paid the bill essentially with those funds. So they had suggested that the funds could be put to other purposes, but, uh, they weren't a purpose that would actually, um, be required to enable the event because the event had occurred and been paid for with funds that were fundraised. So the question is, does council wish to reconsider knowing that or continue with, with providing funds? If the funds were provided, it was suggested that they could be used towards, um, some type of contribution to the, the student families.
The questions for members of council. So again, this is just to give notice. So this will come on to our, uh, our next, um, meeting. So someone's yeah, for someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, your worship.
Thank you.
That town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice that at the August tenth, twenty twenty meeting, council may rescind motion twenty dash one, two, four, approved at the June twenty second, twenty twenty council meeting. That town council for the town of Bridgewater award a grant in the amount of five hundred as per the requested contained in document twenty dash one, twenty to the Ecole de la Rivière Sud as the town's contribution towards the graduation celebration recently held.
Thank you. Seconded by.
I'll second that.
Council Graves. Uh, it's pretty straightforward. Again, we'll discuss this at the next meeting. Um, ready for the question?
Question.
Question being called, Council McGuinness.
Yay.
Council Frazier.
Yay.
Council Thorburn.
Yay.
Council Graves.
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yay.
And I'm in favor. Motion is carried. So we'll talk about this in a few weeks. Uh, our next item is the quarterly reports, which I, I think are great. I love these. Um, so, uh, I will turn that over to the C A O to give us a review of those, please.
Okay. Okay. So you have, uh, two reports. One is the strategic priorities update, and that's where I intended to focus. Uh, you also have the quarterly reports for each department, which, uh, encompass the strategic priorities and then give you a summary of the departmental activities that they've been working on. The period that this covers is the first quarter, so it'd be from April one to June thirty. Uh, the strategic priorities are the priorities that council had, um, approved when they approved the business plan and budget for this fiscal year, and they were developed during a strategic priority setting exercise that we held in January, February of twenty twenty. And they're divided into now and next, and then other items. And then we kind of separate those out into departmental boxes. What I'll be looking for tonight is, uh, if, well, you may or may not be prepared to, if you are, uh, some direction or decision with respects to what other priorities we may want to move up because we'll cover kind of things that have been completed, which makes room for other things to be put into that box. So under the now actions, the sanitary stormwater strategy phasing plan. Remember, we wanted to have a complete analysis of, of our sanitary and storm sewer system.
And just for council, you're going to scroll right to the end if you're not there. It's, it's your last page in that document package?
Yeah. And the, and the first, my, the first few pages of the report cover it, just give you the detail of it. Um, so we awarded an RFP to design point to, to look at our overall system. And that was awarded in March of twenty twenty. So they're working on that and we're anticipating that sometime in the fall. Hopefully we'll be receiving a report. Um, not too sure how COVID nineteen has played into any delay in there, but that was what we were targeting. And we did, uh, pre-approved flow monitors that we could set up to, um, uh, measure flows within our pump station. So those are, those have been installed or are being installed and we're targeting August twenty twenty to have those all in. The sewer rate, the transition strategy, we reported to council in the winter of twenty nineteen and, um, showed you what your rate would have to look like to go full cost recovery and have it based on flow as opposed to a, a magic number pulled out of the air. And, uh, council directed that we do a transition study that would transition us from the old rate to the new rate. The director of finance came to council earlier in the year and suggested that, um, that's going to take an analysis of almost every account. So you can understand the impact and that, uh, and, and how to transition that. So it's to not have a huge jump at any, uh, any particular rate payer um, all at one time. And therefore we recommended that we increase the rate for this year by a percentage, which we did. And that we bring that transition strategy for, for you for next year. So, um, our director of finance retired. Uh, Kim Hopkins is now the director of finance and she's working towards bringing something to council towards the end of summer. The business park, infrastructure RFP. So we're busy there. Uh, Larry and Larry are, uh, working as project managers on this project on behalf of the town, working with On Globe. Uh, we have tenders out and, and working with the province as well for improvements to the town intersections that are required to facilitate the interchange that will be going in the following year. So tender call was this month and work's anticipated to commence in August twenty twenty. Um, we've been, uh, contacting landowners about acquisition for, uh, those intersection improvements. Patrick's been busy preparing a communication plan and meeting with the businesses to let them know where the, uh, where, where the improvements are going to happen and how it's going to impact them temporarily while those improvements occur. Um, phase two, which would be the interchange, the connector road in underground utilities. Designs are being worked on, uh, and, uh, we're anticipating tender in, in twenty twenty one. And right now, uh, we're also working on a cost sharing agreement between the town and the province to nail down everything so that we can confirm that what we're committing funds to is what they understand it to be as well. So that should be coming to council, I'm told. Um, sometimes it's, well, worth to get sometime this month and council will see that in August or September. Um, the Bridgewater Memorial Arena future use, we've got that as completed because we took it as far as council's prepared to go right now. So we had the feasibility study completed. We did a community consultation and we budgeted for modifications for the transit facility. And as you can see, those are underway. So we're going to move, move that project to an operational project now. And then the economic development strategy, strategic direction, we have that as completed as well. Council did some work earlier this year to kind of look at what direction they wanted to go in with economic development. Where could council have the biggest impact? Um, we, uh, were directed to include funds within the budget for an E D O position. And that's been confirmed and, uh, the job description's been completed. And we'll be commencing recruitment in August with the start date towards the end of September. Is what we're looking at there. Um, the next are items that are strategic. We probably are working on them, but they're not nows, meaning they're not time, as time sensitive as the nows. So the community energy investment plan, that's going to be on there for a while, but we have a separate update that the team's prepared there for you on that. Land sales marketing, uh, Nick has prepared a draft report and what we've opted to do with that is to, uh, have the E D O and the E D O comes, uh, onboard. Um, review that and put their, their twist on that and bring that forward to council. There's some concern about approving a strategy that we may be missing some valuable input into. So, um, that will be brought in, brought to council in the fall. The town master plan study. So this is kind of looking at how we lay out our infrastructure for future development. And we, uh, Larry had, um, sectioned off the town in quarters. And council had suggested that we make land north of the one oh three around the interchange our priority. So that was that, that one, as well as Glen Allen area, were the two that were, um, proposed to be our priority areas under the town master plan this year. So scope of work is being worked on by Matt and we're actually meeting in a couple of weeks to hopefully finalize that and get the RFP ready to go. But that'll be a, a, an important project in kind of determining how we look at development in those strategic areas. Asset management, uh, Matt attended some asset management training um, during this period. And, uh, other than that, we've had some conversations about how we move forward with asset management. It's a big undertaking. And we hope to kind of have an, an action plan to show council what the proposed steps would be. Uh, port of Bridgewater, uh, discussions have commenced, but there's been really not too much to update council on during the period of this report besides the context of the May. And, uh, we wait response. Uh, in terms of other, you can see that the reserve policy, um, there's been no progress on that. I'd say the retirement of the director of finance in COVID nineteen kind of taking the finance department's attention for the last few months, um, has kind of interfered with that. Same with the debt policy, except for we did, we did run the debt affordability model with municipal finance and we brought those results to you during the capital budget, budget deliberations, and we brought it to you more recently while we were looking at infrastructure investments as well. So I'd say the model's being used well to help council make decisions. The open space plan, there's been, uh, no progress to report during this period. Uh, council orientation, uh, there's been some pre-orientation work done. So Amanda's busy doing, getting, getting ready for the preliminary list, preparing the candidates' packages, uh, and just getting ready to set up for the election. And we will soon start post-orientation, so post-election orientation, where we look at what information's critical for, uh, the new council as they start their term. Active transportation renewal, you just received that report from Mackenzie kind of on how we're looking at some implementation uh, with looking at our design standards, but you did receive a draft of the plan. And, um, you, uh, directed that we prepare an implementation plan for consideration. Accessibility plan, the committee has, uh, developed a budget that was approved. And they started the public consultation. You probably heard that on, on the radio and social media that they're looking for public input into that. And I would point out that not noted here, but we did apply, uh, just applied today for, uh, under the enabling accessibility fund for a hundred thousand in funding that would look at a, uh, ramp that would, on King Street that would connect the trail there. And so an, an alternative to the stairs and also to look at the ramp at the, a ramp at the arena. That would provide accessibility for, for our users. So those are our strategic priorities. And as I mentioned, there's a few that have come off. Uh, the economic development and the Bridgewater future use. Um, Bridgewater Memorial future use in terms of the, the now, the bigger, the bigger things. And that does make way to say, what do we, is there anything we want to move up in there? Is there anything missing from here that we feel has come up over the last few months that warrants placement in there? And, and just tonight, uh, there was discussion, I mean, when, I always get it mixed up if it's Nelson and Nolan. I think it's Nolan. Nelson. Nelson Nolan, when Nelson was, uh, presenting to council on the rezoning, uh, he did reference the, the limitations that our sanitary system has in terms of, uh, not, not, we're not enabled to have, um, development that would add additional flow. And right now, everything adds additional flow. And when we look at development agreements, we can look at offsetting charges through that tool. But if we're just looking at it through the land use bylaw um, on its own as an amendment to, and it's going to increase density or anything like that, we don't have that tool. The tool we would have would be development charges or infrastructure charges of some sort. But we need the research and the study, basically the science around that to bring forth a justifiable charge that you could then impose on, on development that can help offset the flow that they're going to introduce into the system. So that's, that's not just a couple of days' work. That's, that's a big piece of, of research work for planning and engineering. And something that, um, that would be, that would warrant placement in a box like this.
Deputy Mayor Tanner, save your hand up.
Uh, yeah, just, just one question. I think at one point we were going to do some really short fifteen second, twenty second videos and so on showcasing Bridgewater. And I, I'm not sure we've seen those come about and summer is obviously a great time to showcase Bridgewater and there's lots of now tourists coming in and so on. And I'm just wondering where we are with those.
Um, maybe, maybe Pat can jump in on that. I know that, that, um, some videos are done. Uh, there's another one being done tomorrow, but, uh, Patrick, maybe we can just, maybe you can jump in?
So they're, they seem to be taking a little longer than I guess I anticipated. Is it a financial thing, is it a bandwidth thing from those that we've contracted with? And then how are we, how are we going to promote those, I guess, other than just displaying them?
Can you talk just a little bit about the promotion, Pat? I know we, we haven't decided finally where it's going to go, but... Does that answer your question, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, you know, I just, let's, let's get it out there as fast as humanly possible, because I think we really have a nice opportunity right now that we don't want to miss.
Maybe we can title it, Come to Nova Scotia, We Have Less COVID Than Your Province.
Maybe not that marketing tale.
No, okay, too soon. Sorry, Tammy, continue. Are you just looking for, you're looking for input now?
Yeah, I'm looking for input now, so as I mentioned, there is that, that the sanitary development charge concept. I do know that in terms of time sense, time sensitive items, the town master plan would be one where I think that we're going to want to develop our strategy pretty quickly on how land would be developed around the interchange, and it's a land use, infrastructure, and then that can take us into the next point of highs, well, highest and best use and appraisals and those types of things, but the master plan is a key component of that. And when I look at a council orientation as a, as a time sensitive thing too, that in the next few months, we're going to have to put together a fairly extensive package for, for council, councilors on the town.
Those three sound certainly logical to me. Deputy Mayor, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to do the, the policy, define that policy on offsetting wastewater and so on, primarily because we've just seen this massive influx of new development, new interests in the town, and it'd be nice to have that sort of settled and put to bed, so we, we're not sort of just playing it by ear as each new case sort of comes up.
Yeah, I agree. So those, if you had those three, does that give you, do you have the capacity for staff to do those?
We'd be looking at the sanitary development charges from my company and Jessica, and Larry, feel free to join in, but my understanding is, is that we'd be breaking that up into two forms of development, so that the smaller, simpler ones like the rezoning from R one to R two would be accommodated through the first wave of amendments, and then the more complex ones like the twenty unit apartment building or whatever it may be, or the retail peak restaurant type development that may require rezoning or D A, we'd be looking at something a little different, a little bit more complex. And so we would undoubtedly be requiring outside expertise, and I think that probably the study that Larry's working on now with the sanitary stormwater strategy, the phasing plan, would provide some critical information into developing that charge, because that's going to give you an idea of what you're looking at capital wise over the long term. So some capacity for the smaller pieces, but I do believe even there, we're intending to use some consulting services to assist to get it done. The orientation we got to do, and the master plan that's in our work program is just moving it up as a priority.
Thoughts on that from council? Any other suggestions, or do you like, do you like what's being proposed?
Yeah.
Not hearing any, anyone against those?
Is that enough, are they looking for more work?
No, no.
Sure.
Positive. So I would probably, I would like a motion to approve the revised strategic priorities chart, if you're in agreement with those three things being adjusted.
Is someone prepared to make that motion?
I will, your worship.
Thank you. You're doing all the heavy lifting today, Wayne.
I know.
So Wayne is moving the approval of the revised priorities, step seconded?
Seconded.
Council McGuinness, further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, Council McGuinness?
Yay.
Council Fugier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I'm in favor. Thank you. That'll keep everyone busy.
So the, the quarterly reports are, as I said, they're there, and they, they get into a little bit more detail on each departmental activities that we're working on in addition to the strategic priorities. So I do have every, Larry and Jessica here, if there's any questions that we have.
Any questions from folks on, on any of these? I do appreciate that this takes staff time to provide this level of detail for us, but please know, senior managers, that it is really appreciated to have this, this kind of update for us, so thank you.
If, if I could, just while Larry's on, maybe, so what's the finish timeline on the sidewalk and so on along King? Just out of curiosity.
It will be a bit yet, I know they did a, a big pour, concrete pour today, but we still have to finish the overhead lights, crosswalk lights, and I'm not sure if we received the final components for those as of yet or not, but we are working weekly at them, as well as, I guess, working with the businesses to try and minimize, I guess, the impacts as much as possible.
So, so further to that, Larry, if, if the components are further delayed, the sidewalk can still be completed, right? And then, I mean, would mean we have to close it down again, I guess, to install it, but...
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I'm sure COVID hasn't helped with the supply of material. Other questions on the quarterly reports?
Good job.
Yes, well done, thank you, okay. There you go, and we'll move to our final item, which is eleven point one, land donation request, so council heard from Mr. Barry Dory, who is looking to, looking for the town to donate land, about two hundred thousand dollars worth of land off of Cook Road in order to have a car museum with a schooner component to it, and so we, we asked a bunch of questions of Mr. Dory last week, so it was great for him to, to give his, to give those responses. Is questions, further questions from council, or someone prepared to make a motion?
I can make that motion.
Council Graves, thank you.
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to respond to Barry Dory advising that council does not have any interest in pursuing this matter further.
Thank you, seconded by? Well, I think Council McGuinness is just ahead of you. Any discussion?
Question.
I just want to say, just before we, we go to the vote, that as much as I may love the idea to make a decision of donating two hundred thousand dollars of land without a business plan, locked, well, not even locked in, but really sources of funding, it, it's, to me, it's an impossible decision to make in, in the positive without having that business plan to see if it even can be completed, so that's just where I am on, on that. Questions being called, Council McGuinness?
Yay.
Council Fugier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I'm also in favor, so staff can let Mr. Dory know. I wish him, I wish him luck, sounds like an exciting project, but again, for me at least, to consider, I needed to, I need a business plan, I think council felt the same way as well. There are no items to, no further items to come before council, so hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
By Council Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner, we are adjourned, and hopefully next time we meet, it'll be in person. Have a good night, folks.